Good evening and welcome to the May 14th Council Work Session. I'm happy to see you all here. Just a couple of quick things. Councilor Evans is out of town at his son's graduation, and otherwise he would be here, and he's here in spirit. And you will notice a modification to the agenda. We added an executive session, so we're aiming for 60 minutes on the downtown update, so we have 30 minutes for that executive session. So I'm going to try and hold the clock for all of you, and I apologize for tightening up on that downtown update. So with that, I think we're ready to go.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll invite the team up to take us away on the presentation to give you a sense of where we are and where we're headed for the summer in the downtown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Perry. I'm the City's Facilities Director, and I'm here tonight to give you an update on downtown with Colette Ramirez from LRCS, Will Doughty from Planning and Development, and Police Chief Chris Skinner. And so we're going to do a little bit of a review of last season, talk about what our plan is for the 2018 season, and discuss some new strategies. With that, off to Will Doughty.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. Oh, I need to turn it on first. There we go. As you are all well aware, downtown plays a dual role in the community. On the one hand, it functions as, just in its own right, as a neighborhood, just like any of the other neighborhoods that you represent, Calhoun, Trainsong, Fairmount. At the same time, it's the cultural and civic center of the region, the economic engine that provides employment and fund services throughout the city and the county. It's the symbolic heart of the community. As such, it needs to be a safe and welcoming place for all, a goal that, when you think about it, is, on the one hand, about as simple as you can get, and at the same time, about as complex as human nature. The best way to measure downtown's success in this regard is the presence or absence of families. When Eugeneans are comfortable bringing their children downtown, then you can be sure that pretty much everyone else is going to be comfortable too. With that as a yardstick, there are some successes to feel good about. We recognize the growing frustration with safety and other ongoing concerns. A process like this is necessarily iterative, with each new year as an opportunity to learn from and refine prior experience. We're only in the second year of our current effort, so there's not a whole lot of experience to draw from, but I'm going to start our presentation looking backwards as a sort of context, and then Jeff and Colette will talk about ideas and projects for moving forward. Last year, we found some of our biggest successes in unexpected places. Our Park Host had a huge impact on the safety and cleanliness of the park blocks. An EPD reported that his presence was a significant deterrent of criminal activity in the town square. Power washing sidewalks not only kept things clean, but was a good reminder to all of us who saw it of the care we take in our streets. The tables and chairs and umbrellas in Keysee Square, which was an impromptu decision, turned the plaza into a destination, a place for gathering and enjoying summer in the city. Other pilot programs and initiatives rounded out the picture: lunchtime concerts and performances, additional EPD presence, continued funding for the Community Outreach Response Team and Community Court, curb extensions on Oak Street between the park blocks, signature events including the Huge Parade and the Mural Fest, the Attended Restroom, continued Park Ambassadors on bikes, and more. Last year's work also underscored the need for partnerships and collaboration. It was a key ingredient of the successes and a noticeable need when it was missing. Over the course of the winter, we've been working with various stakeholders and partners to support broader community efforts as a more dynamic and sustainable approach to downtown vitality. This included a conversation with about 40 different stakeholders to brainstorm ways to work together and opportunities for their members and constituents to be more active and creative downtown. And as we shared with you in the fall, our monitoring efforts showed that last year's work resulted in an increase in the ratio of women to men in downtown and an increase in the number of children. It was also clear that there's broad agreement that continued improvement is needed. There's a long way to go, but people who were downtown frequently said that downtown had improved over the previous summers. This becomes a jumping-off point for our work this year, which will continue the process of trying new things, building on last year's successes, and refining weaknesses. So now Jeff and Colette will talk to you about how we can continue to move things forward, getting us to a 2018 that's better than years past.
All right. So again, this year, we're going to focus on keeping it clean downtown. Our downtown team has already started pressure washing and will continue the deep clean strategy for this season. One of the things we learned last year was that two people pressure washing at the same time was often disruptive to businesses and patrons, so this year, we decided just to hire one employee to continue with that work. To supplement our cleaning effort, we're also planning on leasing a sidewalk scrubber, which will allow the team to clean more sidewalks and public spaces on a daily basis. They'll cover a lot more ground. This will give downtown more of a fresh start every day, so pay insurance when they arrive in the morning, they'll feel, you know, they'll gain that feeling that the sidewalks and spaces are well-maintained and cared for. To continue to make downtown beautiful, we're, of course, going to continue, I always look for a plug for Hanging Basket Program, but we're going to continue with that program. We're purchasing 180 baskets. They're still completely pesticide-free, where we use beneficial insects and ladybugs to fight the harmful pests, and so we're excited about that. They're coming May 21st, so they'll be here very soon, along with some planters as well. Last season, The Davis Restaurant came up with a great idea to place redwood planters along the sidewalk in front of their business. I'm sure you've seen those, and they look great. We really liked the way they turned out. And so we also observed that the strategy helped with some of the negative activity on the corner, and it also kept people from walking into the street and, you know, creating a hazard. And so we're building on that idea. We're planning on purchasing a large number that we're going to place throughout downtown very, very soon. In fact, we're just talking about it today, so those should be here any day now, probably line up with the Hanging Basket Program. We're also working with the Cultural Services Urban Canvas Program to commission more temporary artwork downtown, and one of the areas we're focusing on are the remnant structures from the malls. And so, the old mall, that's a photo of one on the right side there, and the structure are actually deteriorating pretty bad, and so we're going to do a little repairs to them and then commission some artwork, so we'll make them a lot more inviting and, you know, welcoming as you walk down those alleyways, which will, of course, then in turn help, you know, discourage negative activity and some of the things we've seen. We again are hiring our, oh, I'm sorry. Our Attended Superman restroom in the park blocks turned out to be a huge success last year. It was well-received by downtown patrons, and we had almost no incidents or issues, a dramatic improvement over the unattended portable restrooms we've had in the park blocks in the past, so that was a big, big plus. Although the use fluctuates based on activities and events, we usually see around 20 people or so that use the restrooms every day. In partnership with the Parking Services Program, we're also planning to open an Attended Restroom in the Overpark Garage. It was so successful in the park blocks, and we've really heard this over and over, an Attended Restroom just almost unilaterally eliminates the issues that we've seen in the past. And so that will be available during normal business hours. Once the program is in operation, we'll close the rest of the portable restrooms downtown, except one in the evening, so there'll be 24-hour access to restrooms, and we should have that available within a month or so. Also, the Wayfinding Program, we're making a little progress on that. City hired Merge, a wayfinding consultant, develop a program for downtown. The plan is complete, and the first phases of the project are being implemented, which will focus on three of the parking garages. And the image on the left is one of the first pieces of that, and you can see that the availability, space availability is up already. It's pretty neat, so you can see if there's spots when you're downtown. All right, with that, I'm going to hand it off, actually, I'll hit this one more before I hand it off to the Chiefs, sorry. Based on all the positive feedback we received last summer, we're keeping our Park Host, Daniel, in the park blocks this season, and the host will help support events and activities, attend the restroom, greet patrons, and of course, remind individuals of park rules as needed. He was super effective last year, so we're going to keep that going, as Will mentioned. Building on the success of the Park Host and the Park Ambassador Program, we're hiring four additional downtown ambassadors this season that will travel throughout the downtown core, so they won't be just placed in the park blocks, but they'll be roving around the downtown core. This is a collaborative effort between our downtown ops team and Parking Services, and so they felt there was a need for that as well, so we're working together on that. The ambassadors will be in addition to the host, so we'll have a total of five ambassadors downtown, and in fact, we're going to rebrand them, so they're all consistent in their uniform, probably a little bit different than what the Park Host is wearing now. The team's mission will be to make patrons downtown feel welcome, safe, provide information about activities, programs, and services, assist with events, and work as a team with EPD and the Red Hats. Based on the success in parks and especially in the park blocks downtown, we know the presence alone is a major factor in deterring illegal behavior. We should have the team on board within the next couple of weeks. In fact, we're reviewing applications as we speak right now. As part of the downtown ambassador initiative, we're also planning to offer training to city staff who would like to participate in the program. I think this, we kind of came up with a few different ideas, but it's almost like an ambassador-light type of program, where city staff will have shirts or buttons or some sort of identification that they're available for information and assistance. We're hoping the additional presence will be noticed by the public and encourage individuals to ask for help when they need it, and then to further enhance safety and security downtown and to deter illegal activities. We're also planning to pilot a program that the Chief's going to talk about here in a minute, so I'll hand that off.
Sure, I'm happy to take it from you.
All right.
So when we talk about our downtown area, there's three different areas that really come to mind that I think that are important to pay attention to when you're trying to get your arms around a lot of the criminal behavior. One of those is human resources. Obviously, we've talked about the downtown team, we've talked about the Park Ambassadors, the Park Hosts. There's a lot of human resources that we want to throw at this problem. The second one is crime prevention through environmental design or engineered solutions that help us deter crime. And the third piece of that is technology. You can't overlook the advances in technology and how that helps us better understand not only the behavior that's going on downtown, but also deter that behavior downtown as well. And so those three things, I think, are going to be really important, and you heard Jeff talk a little bit about some of the environmental design with the planner boxes and, in some cases, the washing of the sidewalks, that I think is a really good step in the right direction. The plan for us this summer is to add, is to supplement the urban parks in the downtown core with two officers in each area for a total of four officers on an overtime basis. I'd love to be able to tell you that we would be able to fully backfill those, but when you're talking about a backfill situation, usually those resources need to come from somewhere to go into the downtown core. And so that's one of the challenges I have as chief, is looking at the available resources and the types of things that we're trying to accomplish in the core of our mission for the entire city when it comes to police services, and whether or not we have the ability to just pull those resources out of where they're at, plop them in the downtown to really be effective. And it's really, it's an opportunity-cost discussion and one that is ongoing, and certainly we try and make that work if at all possible. But more realistically, it would probably be an overtime situation to be able to fund those. And while that can be effective, it's difficult to make that fully sustainable, because the overtime is on a volunteer basis, and in some cases, we can assign the overtime, but now we're talking about staff with limited capacity continuing to burn them out. And what downtown really needs is they need people that are fully engaged, they need police officers that are fully engaged there because they want to be there and understand the mission we're trying to accomplish down there with consistency, and that's what I'm hoping to be able to do with that. And as we move into the future and have great discussions about downtown, is getting to a place where you have those types of resources that we can dedicate to that area. The third piece that I talked about was the technology piece, and the concept of surveillance and/or cameras, while sensitive in many communities, I think is one that's worth having. We've seen tremendous amount of success across the nation in communities our size, smaller and larger, through the deterrence of criminal behavior simply by identifying hotspot locations or those locations that would benefit from surveillance or those types of cameras. There's so many products on the market that can be very subtle in some cases, some that are more ominous. If you go into the French Quarter in New Orleans, you will see things that are full scissor lift command post types of structures that are overlooking the entire street of Bourbon Street, and I'm not suggesting at all that that's what Eugene needs, but there are some very subtle pieces of equipment that can be deployed around the downtown core on an as-needed basis based on good analytics and hotspot types of analysis to put them in the right places at the right time where we're seeing our spikes in criminal behavior. In addition, much like our speed carts where neighborhoods can request to have speed carts in neighborhoods, we can have downtown business owners who are maybe the eyes and the ears of what's going on downtown reach out to us and say, hey, can we see about getting a camera deployed in this area? And it's not as much about watching people and trying to catch people doing bad things, although you definitely will do that. It's more about creating a deterrent for people. And the other collateral benefit can be, and I think about this, I put myself in those shoes because Carrie and I, you know, with Jackson and Kendall, and some of you saw them at the Swearing Inn, when we think about being a family downtown and we feel about, think about wanting to feel safe, the presence of those cameras, especially when they're well-branded and they're well-marketed and well-communicated to the community about what their purpose is, can give a sense of safety for families downtown, and so I think there is a collateral benefit to that. In addition, downtown core is not the only part of the city that would benefit from this. We have lots of events and festivals and peaceful gatherings that would benefit from being able to have that kind of oversight and being able to have that kind of presence. And the technology these days is so robust and is so good that it is the eyes for us to be able to understand where the behavior is, and we can deploy the resources as we need, as we need in that particular area. So it's not going to be just an indiscriminate type of deployment model, it'll be very purposeful, very thought-out, and deeply rooted in analytics and/or complaint-based system where those cameras could go. So think about how well we can cover downtown with the limited resources we have. If we had the ability to monitor cameras, see activity that maybe causes us concern, and instead of waiting for somebody, you get to a place where they feel like they have to call 911 because they feel unsafe, that we can get on the radio from the downtown office and say, hey, this is what I'm seeing, do you mind if a couple officers do a walkthrough? Or, hey, you know, Park Ambassadors or Park Hosts, this is what's kind of going on in your park, can you walk over to this particular corner and just give a presence and see if maybe we can handle things on kind of the lowest level that way? So there's just a lot of real good collateral benefits from that, and it's a piece of technology that I think that the City of Eugene could really, really benefit from. And so we wanted to have that discussion with Council tonight and let you know that's some things that we were thinking, that we're not just thinking of it through just a single lens of human resources or even SEPTED or environmental engineering downtown, but also wanting to leverage technology as well.
Okay, thank you. So another important part of our multi-pronged approach is making social services a priority to continue to support efforts, and we're continuing to support efforts that work, such as Community Court and the Community Outreach Response Team, as well as implementing new pilot programs. Two of our new programs, the Downtown Youth Initiative and the Youth Mentorship Program, are focusing on our young people downtown. Our colleagues in Recreation have been engaging the young people outside of the library and LTD since this winter with the goal of building authentic connections and relationships, and really trying to help those that we can. The reflection that we've heard from this team, too, is that it's been easier than they had thought to really build those relationships, and they've been outside every day providing positive activities as well as connecting them with services. So the evolution of the Downtown Youth Initiative is the Youth Mentorship Program that will be implemented this summer. Our Cultural Services and Facilities Team are working together to employ four to six young people from the Downtown Youth Initiative pulling from 15th Night and also Echo Alternative High School, and our goal is to provide valuable opportunities in a supportive and caring environment and continue to build those positive relationships with adults. Our hope is that by providing opportunities to work at events, helping facilities out with the flowers, graffiti coating the murals downtown, that these young people are going to take pride in their downtown. Another new initiative is, to address an issue we are aware of, is temporary day storage for individuals downtown. It's often challenging for individuals carrying large bags, personal belongings, to gain access to services that they need, such as Community Court and the library. As a solution to this problem, we are implementing a temporary day storage in partnership with St. Vincent de Paul. We are placing a temporary storage unit on the south side of the library, and we're really excited and hopeful about this program and its received support from stakeholders and downtown businesses, and this program should be in place in the next few weeks. So now I'm going to speak on all the fun stuff that's happening this summer, and we know that people attract people. And one of our objectives as part of this multi-pronged approach has been to activate the public spaces to attract a critical mass. So, and one part of this strategy has been to support these larger signature events that are the high points throughout the year. They draw community members from the broader community, not just downtown, and they include families and children. These events are a great opportunity to provide a positive experience and shift perceptions of downtown. The second part of our programming strategy is to provide more ongoing experiences and activations almost daily in the summer, and I'm going to get to that in the next slides. So with that said, we will be continuing with all of our signature events, beginning with the griddles and guides. You have a little flyer come out, we're going to have pancakes, there's going to be bananas and costumes, we're just going to have a really good time. You can also get your Huge Fun Guides, so that's the intention for people to come and get the passport and the event layout for the season. And then on July 29th, you can look forward to our largest signature event with over 10,000 attendees, the Huge Fun Parade and the Downtown Eugene Sunday Streets, a great community celebration of active transportation. We'll once again be hosting Fiesta Cotoral and on the First Friday Art Walk in September. And then this year, we are unveiling coffin races on the Shelton McMurphy Boulevard, so think Soapbox Derby, Coffins and Costumes. We are already generating a ton of excitement with the businesses along the corridor. This will be a great complement to our All Hallows Eugene Event and Light Up Downtown, which will round out the year with a sweet celebration of light and the holiday season, and the mayor always comes out, it's great. I wanted to take some time to talk about a new festival that we are also super excited about, and that's our first visual arts festival. So our goal is to lift up and activate Eugene's visual arts community by celebrating exceptional art in our region. This event will kick off on July 27th with the revival of the Mayor's Art Show, a biennial at Karen Clark Gallery, Salon de Refus, where all the rejects go to New Zone, and then Bridge, a contemporary art event that will showcase five temporary installations to be exhibited actually outside of the Holt Center in Hilton, then also along Will Lammet. In addition to the Visual Arts Festival is 20x21. I just want to give you a brief snapshot of where these artists are coming from this year. So we'll be bringing artists from the UK, Puerto Rico, Japan, New York City, our sister city Kathmandu in Nepal. We have the first female street artist from Afghanistan coming, and France. And they'll be painting during this Visual Arts Festival, Eugene Sunday Streets, the First Friday Art Walk. We call it in our office, the Week of Awesome. There's going to be so much going on. And 20x21 is a great example of what can be accomplished when the private and public sector are equally committed to providing resources and going all-in on a shared vision. So like I said, the second part of our strategy is attracting a critical mass to downtown and with ongoing experiences, such as our party on the plaza every Thursday in July and August at the Holt Center, Fridays at the park blocks, farmer's market, family days, public playable art pianos. All of these will enliven our downtown core with more art and cultural opportunities. I'm also excited to share a few more projects that will amplify what we've already talked about. So our team's been talking about for the last few years, how we incentivize programming and support partners to help us activate it. This year, we're hopeful that we've hit the nail on the head with the downtown program fund. We've more than doubled our investment through matching funds. We worked with a panel of internal and external stakeholders and who have received funding for an additional 25 events on top of what we're already doing. And so you have a handout that lists all of those events, King Pong in Keysee Square, it's going to be an awesome year. So we're working now, Facilities, Cultural Services, Saturday Market, to make sure those events are supported and successful. And then Downtown Encounters is the evolution of our lunchtime performances, so you can see a more variety of art experiences throughout the summer, but really excited to bring stuff downtown in Keysee and the park blocks and kind of the surprise and delight feeling. And we're hopeful that our attendance and positive presence will continue to grow, a positive presence that helps us change perceptions. To help us do this, we need to communicate our successes downtown as well, so the positive stories are shared. We've been working with private businesses and other partners in a joint marketing partnership. Collectively, we are working to promote downtown as a hub for creativity and entrepreneurship, which is what we are. And you have some posters that highlight their, their first product, their, our first example of this month in May, so we'll have those out every month that highlight not only City of Eugene events, but also private events in the core that this team has decided are the priority to promote. Soon you'll be seeing more joint marketing and more visual media. This partnership, we're really, we think it's a great model for working together on behalf of the shared vision. So as we look ahead, we acknowledge there's still a lot of work to do. The issues downtown are really complex, and we are aware there's not one single definitive solution. We remain committed to our multi-pronged approach of keeping our spaces clean, safe, and fun through more programming and activations, a focus on safety and security, and an emphasis on a clean and beautiful downtown, to create that welcoming and inviting environment, an environment that sustains that critical mass that will ultimately contribute to the reduction of crime and enhance the overall livability of downtown. We are not only focused on the lighter, quicker, cheaper also approach, but also longer-term strategies. We remain committed, I like to say tenacious, too, and diligent to working with our partners, both inside and outside our organization, and continue to seek new opportunities for innovative and sustainable solutions to support the people who live, work, and play downtown. innovative and sustainable solutions to support the people who live, work, and play downtown. So thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. I, I just love, on all different levels, the things that you're offering. It makes me feel very hopeful and optimistic about our future, and so I appreciate the thoughts about security and the cleanliness of the infrastructure, and then the programming is terrific, so it sounds great. I have Betty in the queue, Claire, Mike, Chris, Emily, wait.
Alan's over here.
Oh, sorry, Alan. Am I ignoring you? Okay. All right. Betty, take it away.
Thank you. Can't believe I got her before Mike.
You can let him go first.
No, it's, it sounds great. I, when you, I have some questions and some suggestions, but question, the attended restrooms, are you going to have keys? Give people a key? Will that man stand there and buy it while you go in?
The attendant, attendant will be nearby and will provide access. We won't give a person a key, per se, but we'll let them in and make sure.
Thanks. I think restrooms and places to sit are two really important things, but I like the art idea. I wondered if we were thinking of reviving Jacob's Gallery, which would be a good thing to do. And I would like to see art more than just one special day. I think, and we have so many artists locally who could be out showing their work. We are just, we have many talented people in Eugene. When you mentioned Kathmandu, it reminded me of Sister Cities, and I wonder if you'd thought of having a day for Sister Cities to, all the Sister Cities to show things from their cities.
That's a great idea.
We used to have an office downtown, and one, it had four windows, and there was one for each of the Sister Cities with things from there. But I think that we don't pay enough attention to our Sister Cities, and I think a day, at least one day, just to feature each one of those, maybe all of them the same day, or maybe a day for each one. I don't know.
Maybe they could stay up for a series or for a longer time.
They could have their flag and artwork from their country and costumes, if there are such things, and maybe somebody could be dancing if they're, if they're, but.
That's a great idea.
We have Sister, we have four Sister City committees. They are, I don't know how active they are right now, but I think that would be a great idea. Oh, I wonder if we might suspend parking tickets on special days. Have a thought of people, now that we have all those parking meters, which, as you know, I don't like.
Second that motion.
Yeah, Mike and I agree, so it must be right. But if they, if they're having a lot of fun, and then they go back to the car, and there's a $30 ticket, or $40, or whatever it is, sort of spoils it. It makes people not want to come downtown again. You could say, free parking day. I know we have free parking nights in Saturday and Sunday are free, but no, they're not free. I don't know.
You know, I think it's always worth taking a look at those. And what we will ask Jeff to do, Jeff Petrie, our parking.
No, the other Jeff.
Officer, yeah. If there are appropriate times when we do, I would say suspend parking ti, however we want to choose to word that, then there might be some time to do that. So I think it'd be well worth his time to take a look at some of that.
Or you could have somebody there to fix the tickets.
Fixer.
If you want your tickets fixed, go to.
Yeah.
Tell them the address to go to.
We'll be looking into that.
Thank you. I think it sounds really exciting. I hope you'll have this, you could have all the slug queens there one day, too.
Oh, yes.
We have one of them right here on the council, you know.
I do love the slug queens. You're always invited.
Is that Mike?
Emily is a slug.
Everyone loves.
Mike probably, did you run for slug queen, Mike?
In August.
Wow.
And are we having a?
No, thank you.
I wonder if we're thinking about reviving the Eugene celebration with local talent and local food and so forth.
Right now, that's not part of the conversation. We're focusing on spreading out the.
It's a suggestion. It would be a good thing to, I think it should be in September, the way it used to be, so that the schools, schools would be in session, school bands could come out. And you could also have a day for each high school to do, be featured, maybe the middle schools, too. Thank you.
Okay, Claire.
Thank you. I like Betty's ideas. Well, thank you. This is very exciting. Really pleased with all the programming and the success. So I have a mix of questions and comments. So are, in terms of our pressure washing and the sidewalk cleaner, are we deploying that on Saturday and Sunday mornings?
You know, we haven't, we probably, we could on the sidewalk, the scrubber. We haven't, we haven't talked about the exact schedule of that, but.
So you might consider that, because I know we kind of, I think routinely get email messages about folks who've come downtown, particularly on a Sunday after the Bermuda Triangle festivities, and there's often some really unpleasant garbage and debris left behind. So that, you know, would be a nice time to, to clean up. I'm really pleased that the attended restroom was successful, not surprised it was successful. And so you were saying we're going to have an attended restroom in the parking structure?
Yes, the overpark.
The overpark. So using the current restrooms that are in there, or using one of those leased ones?
Actually, yes. Two restrooms that are in the overpark, actually two different restrooms than what used to be the public restroom. So, and so they're, they're a little bit warmer and less prison-like.
Yes, thank you. Those words, amongst the worst urban design possible for public restrooms, I must say, particularly for women's security. So I'm glad that we are finding a new strategy. Really glad to hear that we're, have at least one piece of wayfinding up. I think we've been talking about that for about four years, so it's about time we started implementing that, and I hope we continue to push that. Very excited about the downtown ambassadors. I've been talking about something like that as being, I think, a real missing key to some of the, creating an atmosphere of acceptance and, you know, demonstrating what, what we want to see from folks in terms of behaviors downtown, and having someone who can help facilitate that, and not necessarily having to use one of our armed law enforcement officers to do that. So it's, I, for me, that's, I'm really excited to see how that works, how effective it is. And I don't know if those were the particular individuals that were using, no.
Just photos I found.
Okay, darn. They look like a great crew.
Added one thing on the ambassadors, too. We, we have talked to our stakeholders several times, and we've met with DEI and the Red Hats, and they're supportive of the program as well.
Excellent. That is great to hear. And we definitely would want all of those folks being, wanting to work together. So how are we paying for those positions? I think you mentioned they were, I don't remember actually, if you could.
So two of the positions will be paid for out of the downtown ops budget, and then two of the positions are proposed to be paid for out of parking funds.
Parking funds, okay. From those terrible parking meters that we put back downtown.
Darn right.
Some questions about security cameras. So it sounded like they're going to be monitored in real time?
We don't know.
Okay.
That, the program isn't fully fleshed out until I felt comfortable that council wanted to go down a path of really putting together a good program. So let me, let me give you some options or some ideas of what can happen. So it is real-time video footage that can be recorded, which I would suggest it is. The minimum retention is 30 days. We can go longer if we need to. The nice thing about all these cameras, they're IP-based cameras, so you can remote in and see what's going on anytime you want. And so there may be some functionality or capability in the downtown office with some staff to keep an eye on what's going on and be able to kind of act as a little mini dispatch center if they see some activity and be able to communicate to officers, so we don't have to wait for behavior to get to a point where somebody feels like they have to call 911 or non-emergency, and then you have to dispatch the officers and do all of that. We can actually get ahead of it. So there is some capability for, for monitoring, real-time monitoring, yes.
So I think there's a lot of questions there that I won't go into right now, but I'd like to hear more about what you think my, the options might be. So really quick, before I'm out of time, I just came back from a conference about Community Court, and I was there with a number of folks who are part of our Community Court, and I just wanted to share the, in particular, the defense attorneys had very positive things about our downtown EPD team, and the fact that they direct their clients to those folks as resources if they're in trouble on the street. So I thought that spoke very highly to how officers are interacting with Community Court downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you weren't here, but a couple of years ago, we had several different discussions about cameras downtown. I was one of those that was against the idea at the time, because the Big Brother aspects of it made me a little nervous. But the more I've thought about it over time, my view has evolved, because after all, that's our town square, and if there's a place where you would have the least expectation of privacy, it should be standing in the middle of town square, I would think. So I, I'm a lot more comfortable with that tool as a crime deterrent and a, you know, bad behavior, behavior deterrent to be present. Just my point of view. I appreciate all the information in the report, all the activity and all of the work. It's an awful lot of work to program all that stuff and to change the very nature of how that space is thought of and used. And you guys have done a great job over time with that. But I want to be careful not to miss that there's still somewhat of a disconnect, because we heard a lot of positive things, and those are positive things. But there are an awful lot of folks who are downtown every day who still have some very large-scale concerns about the public safety aspects of it. And today, while we're talking about downtown, we're talking about the positive things we can do, but what we're not doing is talking about the behaviors specifically, not kinds of people, not, you know, conditions of people, but behaviors that we don't think are okay and that the staff knows occur frequently, and what we're doing about those. We hear about it from downtown business owners. We hear about it from people who spend their days downtown frequently. I appreciate that doing positive things has a positive impact in driving those things away. But I think there are an awful lot of folks who would be comforted to hear our staff say, we know we have a problem with X type of behavior. And while that may not be something that we can, you know, like say, for example, people who are panhandling on the downtown streets. There's an issue around freedom of speech. There's, you know, it happened to me a few days ago when I'm walking downtown, a couple of gals, couldn't have been more than 13, and it just broke my heart. We hear about this stuff, but we're, we're not talking about what we can do to alter those behaviors that are negative and concerning to people. And I'd, I'd feel better if we were having more conversations about that. Thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Great presentation. I really appreciate all the stuff that you're doing and all the positive stuff. I think is extremely valuable. I, too, was one of the folks that was reluctant to go with the camera idea, because my concern was primarily around monitoring and use. You just stick them up, and then nothing happens. You don't use them. I'm sense reassured that they're, they could actually be integrated into a real-time, ongoing system of crime prevention. So I'm much more comfortable with the idea of cameras if they're actually going to be used and monitored. So, so I think the time may be right for us to bring that conversation back. I agree with Mike. A lot of my concerns in downtown are, are not based on how you look, but on how you act. And I think, I think the behavior issue is an important one that we need to, to figure out how to integrate. And Chief Skinner, you mentioned that you have limited resources, and I think we have to start thinking about what we can do in the behavior area with the limited resources we have. And I can remember having a number of conversations with Chief Kearns, and he indicated that, you know, there's really kind of an 80/20 rule in many respects here, that 80% of the behavior problems we have downtown are really with a very limited number of people. And so the slide that said, learning from experience, to me, something I've been curious about, is a few years back, we had an exclusion zone, and it was a failure, because it had due process concerns. It was too broadly applied. It swept up too many people. There were some real concerns. We tried to use it as a solution to, to all of downtown, and I think, I think from that standpoint, it was not right. But with experience in mind, what if we tried to go, come at this limited resource 80/20 idea and said, what if you came up with a list, it's only five or six things, very specific, not conditions, very specific behaviors? If you are selling drugs, if you are engaging in prostitution or sexual exploitation, because a lot of kids downtown are being exploited, if you are stealing, it's a defined list of specific behaviors that are considered illegal. They're already on the books as illegal. And if you are convicted of one of those behaviors, not, not, we think you might have done it, you know, it's, we're still thinking about it. No, you are convicted of one of these specific lists, then we can take that 20% of those people and, and remove them from the equation. Because I know your, your officers will oftentimes be dealing with the same offender over and over and over and over again. And if that offender can be dealt with for a specific list of behavioral offenses, you're not guilty by tattoo, you're not guilty by, you know, dreadlock, you're not guilty by backpack, you're guilty by theft, you're guilty by drug dealing, you know, I think, I think there's, this is how we learn from experience, and we don't try to come back with something that really doesn't work, but maybe something more focused. It's not the solution to all downtown, but it could help you get that 20% in a focused way under control. I would be curious to know if there was some, if we could at least take a look at it. I realize people are going to maybe freak out, but I'm really talking about something very small, very focused, that can help with that 20% that are causing 80% of the problems.
I'll weigh in here for the chief, since he's been here now a little over two weeks and doesn't have the experience previously to that. So I think what we can do is provide some information about maybe some things that could work, because I would agree, one of the difficulties before was some due process.
Absolutely.
We had this huge list of things that people could be excluded for, and it feels like maybe if there's a reduced list, maybe we take a look at that. So we'd be happy to provide some additional information back to the council about something like that.
Yeah, and I really want to be clear. I'm not talking about trying to reinvent the exclusion zone. What I'm thinking is, I'm trying to come at, is there a specific, limited list of specific behaviors that are being repeated over and over and over again by certain offenders, that if they can be convicted through a due process, we can try to bring that focused element under control.
Okay, we'll take a look at that and see what we can bring back.
Emily?
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the continued efforts on downtown. I'm really, really concerned about downtown, and although these are cool ideas, I don't really feel placated. We were at a meeting last week with all kinds of steak and hot dog holders, and people were really, really still upset. And I was really uncomfortable there, and I like these ideas. I've thought of ideas. We need, we need more ideas. So I have some questions. Last year, we had $500,000 for downtown things, and on the AIS, it says we have $850,000. So how did that happen?
So we, we received $500,000 through the FY18 budget, and actually, let me step back. Last season, the 2017 season, we, we calculated that cost about $750,000. So for this year, we're kind of off-cycle the way we budget because of the season and the fiscal year. But for this season, we, we figured out we needed about 850, and we spent about 100 through the winter offseason for the park host, park ambassadors, and some winter programming. And then for this season, starting basically in April, May, through September, we needed about 750. And so that 500 at the beginning of the fiscal year was part of that, and then we received an additional 350 through the December supplemental budget to, to make that budget whole.
So is there anything in the budget for next year?
There's some pieces. So for example, what Jeff was talking about in Way In, is that the intent of that $800,000 is to get us through this calendar year, through the season.
Through the season.
Through the season. There's some dollars in the budget, for example, to extend. There's some dollars in the budget, for example, to extend the Community Court to a longer period of time, and I'll have to get back to you specifically on what's in the proposed budget that relates to this. I just don't remember all the pieces to that.
I didn't see too many pieces, and I know that before, we said we need this big chunk. So this is great, but I really am worried about the winter. This last year, this was all party happy, and then once it stopped, and yes, it got colder and rainier, but downtown didn't really change that much. And I got really nervous in the winter about how downtown was going and started making even more noise. So I'm concerned that we don't have money budgeted and that we're going to end at the season, and I don't want to see us go backwards again. The Planters by Davis, they're gorgeous. He bought them. He paid for half the plants. The city pays for the other half, and the city waters them. So these newer ones, is the city going to pay for them, or the business owners going to pay for them?
Just based on the success of that program, we're gonna, we're just gonna buy them and maintain them.
And is that coming from the $850,000?
It is.
$850,000 is a lot of money. So, but Tom's really, really upset. I mean, he's just shaken mad. He says he's not going to stay here, and he's put a lot of money into his business. So I'm still really concerned that things are so tenuous. I love the power washing. I call it the brick and mortar removal program, and I would really like us to repair the sidewalks. The brick inlays had to cost more money than just concrete, and the power washing takes out the mortar, and the bricks are loose, and I found them in a sock, which is really good for bashing people and windows, and it's ADA problem. So it just gets worse as the bricks come out. Some of them are filled with black asphalt that's really ugly, and maybe some of the $850,000 could pay for that, too. I'm going to need a second round. I'm concerned about attended restrooms. Are we really only going to have one downtown? And I think the little London one has, I don't think it's really helped. So anyway, I'll tell you more in my next round.
Alan?
Yeah, as I've been canvassing my ward for my reelection campaign, one of the big things I hear about is the, is about the downtown behaviors. Comes up quite frequently. And most people say, while it's much better than it was, and it's getting better, it's, we're not there yet. And I'm still concerned about it, and I still think there's a lot more we need to do. So I very much appreciate all the continuation of all the stuff that we've already been doing, the programming and the power washing and all those things that we're doing, and then all the new things that we're adding. Great idea. I love your guys' enthusiasm about it. The Planters, the sidewalk scubbers, attended restrooms, the wayfinding ambassadors, youth mentorship program, downtown youth initiative, temporary day storage of St. Vincent de Paul, coffin races, griddles and guides, visual arts festival with international artists, and downtown encounters, just to name a couple, are all great ideas. And I even liked one of Betty's ideas, the City, Sister City Day, not the other one. The, what are, yeah, actually, I went downtown, and I actually could park at a meter this time of year. It was quite amazing. The, what happened to the idea of the downtown manager position?
Honestly, I think we've, you know, given the dollars that we have, we've prioritized it around actually just physical things. I mean, it's still one of our long-term objectives, but, you know, when we're weighing that against two more park ambassadors or downtown ambassadors, that's what we prioritize our dollars with.
Because the idea was to have someone focusing on this stuff 24/7, their job doing it, and so you guys feel that that's getting done without it?
I'm trying. Yeah, you know, it's a team effort, honestly, and it's not one person. I mean, I get up here in Colette and Will and everyone, but, you know, a different day, somebody's really taking the lead on different things, and so we've, it's, it's just a big team effort.
What's also the status of the parks block changes, and kind of the next step of stuff that we're gonna do?
The next thing with that, we are, we're working on a plan. Right now, we've got three pieces, I guess. There's the park blocks, there's the farmer's market, and the city hall. And as we're getting towards clarity on the city hall, that allows the other pieces to come together so that we can have a single plan rather than having plans that don't acknowledge one another for a space that's essentially the same spot. So as we're looking at the way to bring those together, we will soon be starting to work with stakeholders, particularly the markets have an obvious role in getting to that, and then hopefully soon, we'll be back to talk to you about how to move forward.
Yeah, I guess, Chief, I'm one of those skeptics about the surveillance cameras, and I trust that will come back to council for approval if you move forward with anything, correct?
That is correct.
And I'll be one of those people you'll need to convince.
Sure.
To me, it has some benefits, but it also could be a Pandora's box, so it's a trade-off, and I end up coming down on the part of privacy as, over the things that could come out of, the benefits that could come out of surveillance cameras. So I'll be eager to have that conversation when it comes back to us.
I look forward to it.
Jennifer?
Thank you. Thank you for this report. I was just, and I want to thank Emily. She took me downtown today, introduced me to the red hats, and we spent an hour walking around. And I, they do not agree with Alan that it's better. They actually think, feel, they feel from their perspective that things are worse over the last five years, that one of them had started in the last five years. But one of the things they mentioned is exactly what Chris mentioned, is wishing that there were some kind of ordinance or something based on behavior. They really felt like that. They didn't, also, the exclusion zone didn't, you know, that didn't, they didn't feel like it really worked either, but they felt something based on behaviors would be very beneficial down there. But the thing that they mentioned over and over again was mental health and how they really wished cahoots had more capacity. So I'm wondering how you guys feel. You didn't mention that in any of your slides, so I'm wondering how cahoots, you know, factors into downtown and how that's been going.
We work with cahoots pretty closely on our CORT program, and so EPD, they do a lot of outreach. I think it's two days a week where they go out and they focus on mental health issues. And so that's, you know, I'm not the expert on the court program, but I do know that that was actually part of our funding to help support that and continue to work with them. Their great program, cahoots, awesome.
And so do you feel like they are doing enough downtown, or there needed more downtown? Would you agree with the?
No, I don't know if I would be the right person to evaluate whether they're doing it.
Well, I'll take a stab at this, and like any good police officer, I brought backup and Captain Sam, Cam Carr, to talk about this. But what occurs to me on the face of this is that I believe we're dedicated, at least our part is dedicated 10 hours a week to that area, to that. And so with the tremendous success that we've had, I think that it's been proffered, at least to me, conceptually, that this is a, this is a model that can extend and be duplicated outside of the downtown region for some of our neighborhoods that are struggling with some of the same types of things. And so I think part of, part of what you would potentially see if we get, if we fast-forward to a discussion with council around kind of an investment package from a community justice perspective, I think you can expect to see an enhancement to that as part of that. This isn't just about hiring police officers. This is about a holistic 360-degree perspective of our, of our public safety environment, and that'll be a piece of that. So while I think we, it's been very successful, and we've, have enjoyed the engagement and see some real successes, you're only as successful as the investment you make, and right now, it's 10 hours a week.
Okay, so that might segue into the next thing. So we have all these great programs and stuff going on. What's the plan for when the behaviors get pushed out? So do we have a plan for that, when it goes into the, you know, other areas?
I mean, yeah, I don't know if I have a, I mean, we're talking about that, but we all kind of have.
We don't have a really solid plan. I know we're just starting to work with Monroe Neighborhood, Neighbors to try to do some more programming, but it hasn't been something that we've really planned for yet, but it's part of the conversation, and I'm hoping that your first event this Thursday goes well. But that's during the day, and we know there's issues in the evening, and that's not something the programming can, can really affect is the evening issues.
So I'd make a comment about that because we displace criminal behavior all the time with focused, all sorts of focused efforts have a tendency to displace criminal behavior, regardless of whether you're in Richland, Washington, or Eugene, Oregon, right? One of the things that I've been, even though we're talking about the downtown core tonight, one of the things that I've been trying to keep in the conversation is understanding that this is an entire community that has needs and understanding that while we fix, and I believe we can fix and have a more vibrant downtown free of some of the criminal behavior that we're seeing now, you're right, and we may displace that into some of our surrounding neighborhoods. And so from that perspective, I think we need to make sure that whatever, whatever solution we come up with has, has the types of strategies in it that are, that account for that. Because otherwise, we're just going to be right back here having the same conversation, not about downtown, but about some of the neighborhoods around downtown. And so, you know, while I really liked the conversation tonight, I've always been real quick to say, it's my job to look at this community as a whole and what kind of, what kind of opportunities are downtown, but what are some of the threats around the city as well that we might be kind of unintended consequence of what we're doing with the downtown core.
And do you feel that our system of tracking this is going to be good enough to be able to go back and look and see what did happen? How did this get pushed out, and how did we respond, and how effective was that?
Well, I will tell you, not, not understanding yet the full capabilities of our data collection and analytics, I will tell you that a city of this size with a police department that is as competent as it is, should have the ability to be able to report out on that. As a matter of fact, most of what our, most of our strategies that we have in this police department should be driven by data analysis and some kind of thoughtful approach to resource management to include anywhere that we put, would happen to put a camera if agreeable to that. So I guess that's kind of a long-winded way to say yes. I believe that we should be, if we're not tracking the data now, we should start, and then that way, we can have good analytics about, about what's going on, and we can do some kind of annual reporting to council about what we're seeing, not only in the downtown core, but maybe in the surrounding neighborhoods that seem to be, you know, adjacent to downtown and might see some of the collateral, good or bad benefits of what we're doing downtown.
All right.
I can add, we do track, track the data. I'm, also work on Park Watch Team, which is, you know, all, everything but downtown, and, and we have analytics, we take a look at, and we watch that. We'll compare them from this season to last season, and we'll see what kind of progress we've made.
Excellent. And can you talk a little about this temporary day storage? This looks great. I think this is an awesome idea. Is it something you can get into all day, or you drop your stuff off, or how does it work?
Yeah, and so there's actually a program through the service station St. Vincent de Paul manages on 99 that's kind of similar, where they provide service, people can bring their belongings in. And so really, it's, it's pretty straightforward and simple. We're going to have a pod container, and folks can come in during set hours, drop their stuff off, take a ticket or whatever, and then come back and get it. You know, it's probably not going to be, we've, we're still working on the hours and working through the contract with St. Vincent de Paul, but we've talked about hours in the morning, maybe the afternoon, align with the library because it's super critical, and it'll help, help with a lot of issues around that, and people just leaving their stuff outside to go in and get services and risk it being stolen and stuff like that. So that's really the, the concept.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have three more people in the queue, and it is 6:30. So I'm wondering if we could just limit the timer to one minute. I'll give you each a lightning round. I've got Betty, Mike, and Emily, and then we need to go on to the next topic, okay?
One minute, that's a good idea. So firstly, I'll say I, I'm skeptical about cameras. I'm very skeptical about excluding anybody because they, people have to be somewhere. But the main thing I wanted to say is Keysee Square, we need to open those, we need to pay to open those walls on both sides, and the owner of the buildings on both adjoining is quite willing to have it opened, and I think it would be a big contribution to the atmosphere of downtown, and I think it's worth the city's money to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
A clean, safe, and welcoming downtown. Awesomely titled, that's a great goal. We're talking about safety, behaviors, one of those things, and I want to reiterate, I believe that the people who have the strongest concern about this would be, would feel more comforted that we're acting in a way that's in their best interest if they heard us call out those behaviors in meetings like this and say, "Here's our strategy for dealing with that." Even if we're not there yet, like Chris was saying, let's, let's, let's have a strategy for behaviors that are merely cited or that we can't arrest or enforce appropriately or that we don't want to. Let's have a conversation about those specific behaviors. We don't find them acceptable, here's our strategy. And I guess I would also say, there's a whole host of behaviors that make downtown unwelcoming. I get that we want it to be a welcoming place, and we can't make a law that says there's no panhandling, but the presence of quite a lot of panhandling is a very unwelcoming behavior. So I'd love us to be able to talk about what sort of strategies do we have to eliminate unwelcoming behavior? Because we're talking about the good things we're doing, and that's perfect, and that's awesome, and we should be. But we're not talking about how to enforce on or how to discourage the unwelcoming behaviors. And lastly, I will say, show of hands, anybody ever seen Eugene downtown safety report? Facebook page? I see one, two. Okay, this is where members of our community are posting videos of the law being broken downtown. We should be using technology in that way, too, in my opinion, and deputizing folks to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Emily, last word.
I have some questions about how much things are going to cost, like the day storage, the, the security cameras, the number of officers downtown, is that the same as last year? Are we going to have bike officers? How much do the downtown ambassadors cost? I had a suggestion that when, if we get wayfinding signs, we put some of the rules regarding bikes on sidewalks and dogs because it's, little blue things on the sidewalk aren't working. Someone suggested that on Sundays, we invite the artists to come to Keysee Square and do their art and maybe sell some things. Someone else suggested we put blue lights like they have at campus, so if you need the police, you can just hit the button on those. We got some answers to our questions in a handout. Mine was about red caps. I really appreciate the response. The last question, bullet point, was other sources of revenue. I would really like to explore that. That was nice, other sources, but I think that having more red caps would really help. They're cheaper and faster to get than EPD. I've been talking about this since December. So we finally got how much they cost, how can we get the money? Some business owners and I are willing to sit at Keysee Square in Bermuda and Spain at the lunch hour. Checks accepted.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate all your work, and I know there's more to come, so thank you very much. So we are now going to close this work session and go into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Representatives of the news media, sorry, representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we may return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. So I'll just, oh.